Good evening and welcome to the November 5th meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. Tonight, we have with us three Boy Scouts from Troop 1033, Adam Twist, Charlotte Knosman, and George Knosman, and they will be leading the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Kendall will begin with the invocation. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, as we embark upon this holiday season that is fast approaching, open your arms to us citizens here in Troy, and let your wisdom and light shine upon us. Also, dear Lord, please be with the those who protect us on a day-to-day basis, and those who are stationed overseas and in the military around the world, and here in the U.S. that protects us and protects our freedoms. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
Mr. Severt?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Lutz?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Make a motion to excuse Mr. Heath.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to excuse Mr. Heath. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath is excused.
We'll begin with committee reports tonight. The Personnel Committee will start off with reports. No. Oh, I'm sorry. Forgot you.
That's okay.
Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the October 16th meeting.
Minutes of Council, October 15. Committee reports. Community and Economic Development Committee recommended legislation be prepared, accepting final plat of Section 5 Fox Harbor subdivision. Committee recommended legislation be prepared for final acceptance of Delkamp annexation, and that regarding the J and B annexation, the three pieces of legislation related to services buffering and consent be prepared and approved. Finance Committee recommended that a grant application be submitted for the West Main Street Corridor Project. Committee recommended supporting the Loan Review Committee regarding a loan and a subordination of a loan. Loan Ordinance Committee recommended that legislation be prepared to express council's objection to State Issue 1. Safety and Health Committee recommended legislation be prepared to approve the 2019 funding of Miami County Health District. Utilities Committee recommended legislation be prepared authorizing bidding for the 2018 Waterline Improvement Project. Resolution Number R 41 2018, agreement with Miami County General Health, was given first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R 42 2018, bidding for the 2018 Waterline Improvement Project was given first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R 43 2018, establishing municipal services for the J and B annexation was given first reading and adopted. Resolution R 44 2018, establishing buffer requirements for the J and B annexation was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution Number R 45 2018, consenting to the J and B annexation was given first reading and adopted. Resolution R 46 2018, opposition to State Issue 1 was given first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R 47 2018, submitted applications for West Main Street Corridor Project funding, first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R 48 2018, application Archase LLC to assume loans from PNC Ventures was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution Number R 49 2018, loan application Char Acres LLC was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance Number O 44 2018, final plat Fox Harbor subdivision, Section 5, first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number O 45 2018, consenting to the Delkamp annexation, 10.284 acres from Concord Township, was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number O 46 2018, routine reappropriation was given first reading and was adopted. Following various comments, council adjourned at 8:08 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move we accept the minutes as read?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Severt to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
And now, the Personnel Committee will start off the committee reports this evening with Chairman, Mr. Todd Severt.
Thank you, Madam President. I have an oral report and then a committee report to announce to council today. On October 29th, committee members Twist and Severt met to consider authorizing an agreement for Labor Council associated with the collective bargaining process. The city has six bargaining unit agreements that expire at year-end. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an agreement with the firm of Jackson Lewis PC for legal services for collective bargaining and related personnel services. For this type of professional services agreement, there is not a requirement for a not-to-exceed amount, and that's submitted by Mr. Twist and myself as chairman. If it may, do I go to the next?
Are there any questions on that from council? You can proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. There is a oral personnel report. Mayor Beamish has asked for approval of the appointment of Joseph Graves to the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund Review Committee to fulfill the unexpired term of J.C. Wallace. Do I make the motion now? Okay. I move that council approve the appointment of Joseph Graves to the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund Review Committee for a term commencing immediately through December 31st, 2021. I would note that I spoke with the other two members of the committee, Mr. Kendall and Mr. Twist, prior to this meeting, and they both have affirmed, or requested this be affirmed, Madam President.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved by Mr. Severt and seconded by Mr. Phillips to approve the appointment of Joseph Graves to the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund Review Committee. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Did you have anything further, Mr. Severt?
No, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Recreation and Parks Committee has the next report in the absence of Chairman Heath. Mrs. Oda, can you provide that report, please?
I would love to. My computer has blacked out that section. Sue, can I have that?
I saw it. I vouch.
Okay. This committee met on October 15th to consider a recommendation from the Board of Park Commissioners that approximately three-tenths of an acre of Archer Park be declared as surplus and offered for sale as the small area is not needed for park purposes. This committee supports the recommendation of the Board of Park Commissioners and recommends that legislation be prepared to declare surplus and offer it for sale an approximate three-tenths of an acre parcel to the rear of Archer Park. We understand that legislation will be provided once the survey and legal description have been prepared. Respectfully submitted, myself and John Twilliger. Is there any questions from council?
I do, Madam President.
Is that parcel at the end where the, they can walk to, through to the back baseball
field on Governor's?
Yes.
That walk path? So if that becomes sold, then that would be, would that sign be taken where it says park entrance?
No. Okay. So it is actually to the east of that walkway behind the residence there, to the east of the walkway. The walkway stays. That is not part of the surplus.
All right. That's it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Oda. Chairman Bobby Phillips has the next report from the Streets and Sidewalks Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Streets and Sidewalks Committee met on October 29th to hear recommendations from staff, which was going to create two downtown parking programs and modifies other traffic and parking ordinances. In addition to the report of staff, our Main Street Executive Director provided some survey information and comments from downtown business owners and residents, and comments were also heard from various citizens that were present at the meeting. The committee asked city staff to review the comments, questions, and provide information for the committee to again meet and discuss the proposed legislation. The committee also asked to have a copy of any policies that are proposed for the plac of amnesty programs. Another meeting will be set at a later date, and there is no real timeframe for this, whether it's in the next 30, 60, or 90 days.
Okay. Is there any questions from council? You may continue.
We also met on the 29th of October regarding bidding for the sidewalk improvement program Phase 11. The project to be bid includes the properties where the owners have not obtained a permit to have the work done. The estimated cost of the work to be bid is $350,000. While this exceeds the budgeted amount, funds are available. It was a recommendation on the committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the sidewalk improvement program Phase 11 at a cost not to exceed $350,000, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mr. Lutz, and myself as chair.
Any questions from council on this report? You may continue.
Our third item, excuse me, on October 29th, we also heard regarding authorizing easements associated with the Troy Recreation Trail Resurfacing Project. To meet federal requirements related to the funding of the resurfacing project, formal easements must be executed for areas of the trail located on property under the ownership of the city or Board of Park Commissioners, and it is the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety or the Board of Park Commissioners to execute documents dedicating easements on city and park board properties related to the Troy Recreational Trail Resurfacing Project, and this again is submitted by Mr. Heath, Mr. Lutz, and myself as chair.
And are there any questions from council on this report? You may continue.
We also heard on October 29th and met to consider authorizing bidding for the Hobart Arena Parking Lot Improvement Project. While initially envisioned and budgeted as an overlay project, a consulting engineer has confirmed that the project needs to include reconstruction of the parking lot, provide a stormwater collection system with catch basins to provide for appropriate drainage of the lot, sidewalks, curbs, and parking, and including parking lot lighting. The project estimate is $1.5 million. This does exceed the $500,000 budgeted amount. However, the additional funds are available, and it was the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Hobart Arena Parking Lot Improvements at a cost not to exceed $1.5 million. And I might add that there was a question today from a resident in the city about the existing island, green space that's out there, which will remain in place as is, no additional planting or anything else will be going into that. And this report is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mr. Lutz, and myself as chair.
And are there any questions from council? Do you have anything further, Mr. Phillips?
One more.
Okay. You may continue.
On October 15th, the committee met to consider a recommendation from the Troy Planning Commission that the petition to narrow or vacate a portion of Drury Lane west of South Ridge Avenue and east of Lake Street be approved. The vacation of this area will not affect any existing sidewalks and streets and is supported by city staff. It was the recommendation of the committee to support the Troy Planning Commission and recommend that legislation be prepared to approve the vacation portion of Drury Lane to narrow the street as discussed in the detailed report and as petitioned and recommended by the Troy Planning Commission, and this again is submitted by Mr. Heath, Mr. Lutz, and myself as chair.
And are there any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Phillips. The last report tonight is from the Utilities Committee, and Chairman, Mr. John Twilliger.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee members Lutz and Twist met on October 29th to consider a professional service agreement with Access Engineering of Salina, Ohio, for the design of the Harrison Atlantic Street Waterline Project at a cost not to exceed $65,000. This firm is familiar with the CD BG projects and the complexity of the funding sources. CD BG funds are anticipated to fund all but approximately $100,000 of this estimated $750,000 waterline replacement project. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety to enter into an agreement with Access Engineering of Salina, Ohio, for the design of the Harrison Atlantic Street Waterline Project at a cost not to exceed $65,000, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Lutz, Mr. Twist, and myself as chair.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Twilliger. We now open the meeting to citizen comments. At this time, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to the agenda items this evening? If so, come to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Grant Curver Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R 50, 2018.
Resolution Number R 50, 2018. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for Phase 11 of the sidewalk repair program. This will be at a cost not to exceed $350,000. First reading.
Are there any comments from council?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R 51, 2018.
Resolution Number R 51, 2018. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for Hobart Arena Parking Lot Improvement Project at a cost not to exceed $1,500,000. First reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the resolution. Are there any comments from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R 52, 2018.
Resolution Number R 52, 2018. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to employ counsel for the purposes of negotiation and collective bargaining. This will have an agreement with the firm of Jackson Lewis PC. First reading.
Are there any comments from council?
Move to suspend the rules, please. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Severt and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the resolution. Are there any questions from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R 53, 2018.
Resolution Number R 53, 2018. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Access Engineering Solutions LLC of Salina, Ohio, to design the Harrison Atlantic Street Waterline Critical Infrastructure Project. $65,000 is the amount not to exceed. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions from council? Move to adopt.
Motion to suspend the rules. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Twist and seconded by Mr. Phillips to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R 54, 2018.
Resolution Number R 54, 2018. Resolution authorizing the Board of Park Commissioners of the City of Troy, Ohio, and the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to execute easements related to the Troy Recreational Trail Resurfacing Project. This is the first reading.
Any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the resolution. Are there any comments from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R 55, 2018.
Resolution Number R 55, 2018. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with FOP Ohio Labor Council, Inc., Troy Police Officers Association, and declaring an emergency. This sets the wages and benefits for the members of the Police Officers Association for years 2019 through 2021. First reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger? Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-56, 2018.
Resolution number R-56, 2018. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with FOP Ohio Labor Council, Inc., Troy Police Sergeants Association, and declaring an emergency. This will set the wages and benefits for the members of the Sergeants Association for years 2019 through 2021. First reading.
Are there any comments from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Turwelliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Turwelliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to read ordinance O-47, 2018.
Ordinance number O-47, 2018. An ordinance vacating a portion of Drury Lane by narrowing the right-of-way in the City of Troy, Ohio. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission and petitioned by all abutting property owners. First reading.
Is there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Turwelliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the resolution -- or ordinance, I'm sorry. Is there any questions from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Turwelliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-48, 2018.
Ordinance number O-48, 2018. Ordinance amending the general plan of the Kettering Health Network Troy Medical Center Two Plan Development and declaring an emergency. This has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. There will be a public hearing at the next council meeting. This is the first reading.
And because of the public hearing, this will go to a second reading. Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-49, 2018.
Ordinance number O-49, 2018. Ordinance changing the zoning of Inlet 8661, parcel number DO8103276, in the City of Troy, Ohio, from O-R1 Office Residential District to M2 Light Industrial District. This is the address of 532 Grant Street. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. Will have a public hearing at the next council meeting. First reading.
This will also go to a second reading. Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance O-50, 2018.
Ordinance number O-50, 2018. Ordinance fixing salaries and wages of certain employees of the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This sets the salaries from 2019 through 2021 for the members of the Troy Police Officers Association and the Troy Police Sergeants Association. First reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Turwelliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Turwelliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Turwelliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Turwelliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read our final ordinance of the evening, O-52, 2018.
Ordinance number O-52, 2018. Ordinance fixing salaries and wages of certain employees of the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This sets the salary ranges for 2019 through 2021 for the FSLA-exempt employees. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Turwelliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the ordinance. Is there any discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Turwelliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Turwelliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read our final ordinance of the evening, O-52, 2018.
Ordinance number O-52, 2018. Ordinance fixing salaries and wages of certain employees of the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This sets the salary ranges for 2019 through 2021 for the FSLA-exempt employees. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.